We will conduct our legislative caucus prior to the start of our legislative session. I will call the meeting to order momentarily. Mr. Truesdale will lead the roll call. I will lead the invocation this evening, followed by the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Jones. For communications this evening, we are joined by Mr. Brad Jones, president and CEO of Harris Town Development Corporation, recognizing their 50th anniversary. We are also joined by Ms. Gloria Martin Roberts, Director of Building and Housing, and Mr. Jason Graves, Director of Business Development, who will share a presentation on the 2024 Annual Action Plan. Then we will move to courtesy of the floor. Approval of minutes, we have two sets of minutes for approval this evening. The first will be approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on June 11, 2024, and the second set of minutes is for the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on June 18, 2024. We will then move to reports of committees. There is one report this evening, which I will deliver on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session of June 18, 2024. We do not have any ordinances for first reading. There is one ordinance for amendment, that's Bill 3 of 2024. We will then move to ordinances for final passage, Bill 3 of 2024, which we will vote upon. Then resolutions. We have three resolutions this evening. Resolution 41 of 2024 will move to the Building and Housing Committee. Resolution 42 of 2024 will move to the Administration Committee. And Resolution 43 of 2024 will also move to the Administration Committee. Is there any old business council members? Seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, and then we will adjourn. So the time is 6:02 PM. I would like to officially call our legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. As I mentioned, I will lead the invocation this evening. I would like to ask everyone to please keep the families of the following Harrisburg residents in our thoughts and prayers during their time of bereavement. Ms. Constance Greer, Ms. Connie, as she was affectionately known, a 1956 graduate of the former William Penn High School. Ms. Connie enjoyed shopping, traveling, and attending cultural events. Ms. Rita Chase, a 1969 graduate of the former John Harris High School, who enjoyed playing cards, bingo, and cooking. Ms. Rita was a fashionista. She loved different colored sneakers, glasses, and jewelry. Ms. Maddie Waters, a 1964 graduate of the former William Penn High School. She enjoyed swimming, bowling, skating, and spending time with her family and friends. And Mr. Kyle Jackson. Kyle was a sickle cell warrior who fought and never gave up. Kyle was passionate about business, the stock market, and global currency. He also had a great sense of humor and an unforgettable smile. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Jones. By the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Our first order of communications this evening, we are joined by Mr. Brad Jones, President and CEO of Harris Town Development Corporation, recognizing their 50th anniversary. We are also joined by Ms. Gloria Martin Roberts, Director of Building and Housing, and Mr. Jason Graves, Director of Business Development, who will share a presentation on the 2024 Annual Action Plan. Then we will move to courtesy of the floor. Approval of minutes, we have two sets of minutes for approval this evening. The first will be approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on June 11, 2024, and the second set of minutes is for the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on June 18, 2024. We will then move to orders for final passage, Bill 3 of 2024, which we will vote upon. Then resolutions. We have three resolutions this evening. Resolution 41 of 2024 will move to the Building and Housing Committee. Resolution 42 of 2024 will move to the Administration Committee. And Resolution 43 of 2024 will also move to the Administration Committee. Is there any old business council members? Seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, and then we will adjourn. So the time is 6:02 PM. I would like to officially call our legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. As I mentioned, I will lead the invocation this evening. I would like to ask everyone to please keep the families of the following Harrisburg residents in our thoughts and prayers during their time of bereavement. Ms. Constance Greer, Ms. Connie, as she was affectionately known, a 1956 graduate of the former William Penn High School. Ms. Connie enjoyed shopping, traveling, and attending cultural events. Ms. Rita Chase, a 1969 graduate of the former John Harris High School, who enjoyed playing cards, bingo, and cooking. Ms. Rita was a fashionista. She loved different colored sneakers, glasses, and jewelry. Ms. Maddie Waters, a 1964 graduate of the former William Penn High School. She enjoyed swimming, bowling, skating, and spending time with her family and friends. And Mr. Kyle Jackson. Kyle was a sickle cell warrior who fought and never gave up. Kyle was passionate about business, the stock market, and global currency. He also had a great sense of humor and an unforgettable smile. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Jones. By the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Our first order of communications this evening, we are joined by Mr. Brad Jones, President and CEO of Harris Town Development Corporation, recognizing their 50th anniversary. We are also joined by Ms. Gloria Martin Roberts, Director of Building and Housing, and Mr. Jason Graves, Director of Business Development, who will share a presentation on the 2024 Annual Action Plan. Then we will move to courtesy of the floor. Approval of minutes, we have two sets of minutes for approval this evening. The first will be approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on June 11, 2024, and the second set of minutes is for the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on June 18, 2024. We will then move to orders for final passage, Bill 3 of 2024, which we will vote upon. Then resolutions. We have three resolutions this evening. Resolution 41 of 2024 will move to the Building and Housing Committee. Resolution 42 of 2024 will move to the Administration Committee. And Resolution 43 of 2024 will also move to the Administration Committee. Is there any old business council members? Seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, and then we will adjourn. So the time is 6:02 PM. I would like to officially call our legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. As I mentioned, I will lead the invocation this evening. I would like to ask everyone to please keep the families of the following Harrisburg residents in our thoughts and prayers during their time of bereavement. Ms. Constance Greer, Ms. Connie, as she was affectionately known, a 1956 graduate of the former William Penn High School. Ms. Connie enjoyed shopping, traveling, and attending cultural events. Ms. Rita Chase, a 1969 graduate of the former John Harris High School, who enjoyed playing cards, bingo, and cooking. Ms. Rita was a fashionista. She loved different colored sneakers, glasses, and jewelry. Ms. Maddie Waters, a 1964 graduate of the former William Penn High School. She enjoyed swimming, bowling, skating, and spending time with her family and friends. And Mr. Kyle Jackson. Kyle was a sickle cell warrior who fought and never gave up. Kyle was passionate about business, the stock market, and global currency. He also had a great sense of humor and an unforgettable smile. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Jones. By the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Our first order of communications this evening, we are joined by Mr. Brad Jones, President and CEO of Harris Town Development Corporation, recognizing their 50th anniversary. We are also joined by Ms. Gloria Martin Roberts, Director of Building and Housing, and Mr. Jason Graves, Director of Business Development, who will share a presentation on the 2024 Annual Action Plan. Then we will move to courtesy of the floor. Approval of minutes, we have two sets of minutes for approval this evening. The first will be approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on June 11, 2024, and the second set of minutes is for the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on June 18, 2024. We will then move to orders for final passage, Bill 3 of 2024, which we will vote upon. Then resolutions. We have three resolutions this evening. Resolution 41 of 2024 will move to the Building and Housing Committee. Resolution 42 of 2024 will move to the Administration Committee. And Resolution 43 of 2024 will also move to the Administration Committee. Is there any old business council members? Seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, and then we will adjourn. So the time is 6:02 PM. I would like to officially call our legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. As I mentioned, I will lead the invocation this evening. I would like to ask everyone to please keep the families of the following Harrisburg residents in our thoughts and prayers during their time of bereavement. Ms. Constance Greer, Ms. Connie, as she was affectionately known, a 1956 graduate of the former William Penn High School. Ms. Connie enjoyed shopping, traveling, and attending cultural events. Ms. Rita Chase, a 1969 graduate of the former John Harris High School, who enjoyed playing cards, bingo, and cooking. Ms. Rita was a fashionista. She loved different colored sneakers, glasses, and jewelry. Ms. Maddie Waters, a 1964 graduate of the former William Penn High School. She enjoyed swimming, bowling, skating, and spending time with her family and friends. And Mr. Kyle Jackson. Kyle was a sickle cell warrior who fought and never gave up. Kyle was passionate about business, the stock market, and global currency. He also had a great sense of humor and an unforgettable smile. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Jones.
By the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Our first order of communications this evening, we are joined by Mr. Brad Jones,
We will conduct our legislative caucus prior to the start of our legislative session. I will call the meeting to order momentarily. Mr. Truesdale will lead the roll call. I will lead the invocation this evening, followed by the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Jones. For communications this evening, we are joined by Mr. Brad Jones, President and CEO of Harris Town Development Corporation, recognizing their 50th anniversary. We are also joined by Ms. Gloria Martin Roberts, Director of Building and Housing, and Mr. Jason Graves, Director of Business Development, who will share a presentation on the 2024 Annual Action Plan. Then we will move to courtesy of the floor. Approval of minutes, we have two sets of minutes for approval this evening. The first will be approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on June 11, 2024. And the second set of minutes is for the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on June 18, 2024. We will then move to reports of committees. There is one report this evening, which I will deliver on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session of June 18, 2024. We do not have any ordinances for first reading. There is one ordinance for amendment, that's Bill 3 of 2024. We will then move to ordinances for final passage, Bill 3 of 2024, which we will vote upon. Then resolutions. We have three resolutions this evening. Resolution 41 of 2024 will move to the Building and Housing Committee. Resolution 42 of 2024 will move to the Administration Committee. And Resolution 43 of 2004 will also move to the Administration Committee. Is there any old business, council members? Seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, and then we will adjourn. So the time is 6:02 PM. I would like to officially call our legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Ross.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. As I mentioned, I will lead the invocation this evening. I would like to ask everyone to please keep the families of the following Harrisburg residents in our thoughts and prayers during their time of bereavement. Ms. Constance Greer, Ms. Connie, as she was affectionately known, a 1956 graduate of the former William Penn High School. Ms. Connie enjoyed shopping, traveling, and attending cultural events. Ms. Rita Chase, a 1969 graduate of the former John Harris High School, who enjoyed playing cards, bingo, and cooking. Ms. Rita was a fashionista. She loved different colored sneakers, glasses, and jewelry. Ms. Maddie Waters, a 1964 graduate of the former William Penn High School. She enjoyed swimming, bowling, skating, and spending time with her family and friends. And Mr. Kyle Jackson. Kyle was a sickle cell warrior who fought and never gave up. Kyle was passionate about business, the stock market, and global currency. He also had a great sense of humor and an unforgettable smile. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilman Jones.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Our first order of communications this evening, we are joined by Mr. Brad Jones, who serves as the President and CEO of Harris Town Development Corporation in recognition of their 50th anniversary.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Members of Council. It's a very nice honor to be in front of you, and thank you for the invitation just to come and give you a very brief update on, you know, Harris Town Development Corporation was formed in 1974 with a mission to redevelop, revitalize downtown Harrisburg after the 1972 flood. And we've stayed focused on that mission for the last 50 years, and we hope to do so for another 50. We've been involved in a myriad of projects, many of which you know and hopefully enjoy on a regular basis. Strawberry Square, you know, the, this building here actually was built by us in partnership with the city in 1982. I know you spend a lot of time here, so. Also, the Harrisburg Hilton, the Whittaker Center for Science and the Arts. We were involved in the development of the Penn National Headquarters here, and many other projects. I ask if the clerk would pass out a copy of our 50-year anniversary booklet. We tried to capture sort of some of the, you know, salient history of the corporation and just, so it's really a history book of the downtown and things that have happened here in the downtown and the progress that has been made. I will say more recently, we've really been trying to focus on providing a lot more opportunities for small businesses. We signed about a dozen new deals last year. Many new businesses in Strawberry Square, on North Third Street and South Third Street. Many of those are minority and women-owned businesses. And I invite you all to come down and shop and visit some of those businesses. And we continue to make improvements in, I think, the small business community here in the downtown. And we're also been hosting a lot of different events and activities for the public, both inside Strawberry Square, where we have a brand-new stage that we're opening up to the, you know, school groups and nonprofit groups, and all kinds of other activities and events to the public. And then we're also doing a whole host of different events in the south of Market area, block parties. Last week, we joined with the Young Professionals of Color for a Juneteenth celebration. We have another block party this Thursday. And we have a whole series of other events in the Soma neighborhood for folks to come down and just enjoy all the great things that are in the city. So with that, I'll stop and just, again, thank you for the time. We appreciate all the hard work you all do here every week. No, it's not easy. And thank you for, you know, giving us the opportunity to celebrate a little bit with you. And if there's something in here that you have a question, there's a good chance it's probably in the book. We tried to put every project we've ever worked on in the back appendix. So happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you very much. I will open the floor to my colleagues to determine if they have any questions for you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, are you talking to him?
Both of you, Councilman Jones, please.
No, how you doing again? I just want to be able to reach out to you and have some discussion around some of the things that you're doing and looking to do in the city. So our clerk said that he can get your information to me, so that's all. I don't want to have any other questions.
That'd be great, look forward to it.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, do you have any questions?
No questions for me. Thank you, Mr. Jones and Ms. Martin, for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. Good evening, Mr. Jones. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for the lovely booklet as well. It was really nice, taking a glimpse through history and seeing what Harrisburg was like and some changes and updates you all have made. It was great to see it in the 50s with downtown and all the shopping and stuff, so.
Yes.
That was really neat to see. I've heard of it, but I never really saw pictures. My mom would always talk about pomeroy.
Right.
So that was a big deal.
I know, we all miss pomeroy.
Yeah, she does too. That was a big deal for her, so it's nice to see it, but no questions, just thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, I don't have any questions. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for the glimpse of history. If someone was interested in getting a copy of it, where could they get it?
Oh, we have plenty of copies. There's a number in the book. You can just contact the clerk, and I can bring over as many copies as you'd like.
Okay, thanks. I think having some here in the building would be great, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. No questions, just wanted to say thank you. I do remember pomeroy as a kid also, but I think pomeroy was about the only store downtown. I think Eddie's Men's Shop was there across the street, but it was a ghost town down here, so. Was it Bunn? It was a ghost town other than those stores. So.
Yeah, wow, that's good.
Okay.
You remember that, make sure.
Bringing back memories. But thank you, and as long as, I think I have your contact information.
Anytime.
I have some ideas about the utilization of the stage in Strawberry Square, so I'll reach out to you.
That'd be fantastic. We welcome any, any groups that you want to bring to the stage there. Just let us know, and we want to program that stage as much as possible.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
You mentioned a few of these things. I do have a proclamation in recognition of the 50th anniversary, so please just indulge me for a few minutes. The City of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania proclamation. Whereas the City of Harrisburg applauds Harris Town Development Corporation for their dedicated service for 50 years. And whereas Harris Town Development Corporation is a nonprofit real estate development company that has revitalized downtown Harrisburg since 1974. And whereas Harris Town Development Corporation carries out their mission to increase social, cultural, and economic activity by excelling in urban planning and development to better link the downtown to Harrisburg's regional community. And whereas Harris Town Development Corporation's vision is to make downtown Harrisburg a vibrant, growing district that attracts investment and is a showcase location to live, work, and play. And whereas Harris Town Development Corporation has partnered with the City of Harrisburg over the years on commercial projects, including Strawberry Square, 333 Market Street, the Martin Luther King Jr. City Government Center, the Harrisburg Transportation Center, Aberdeen Muse, the Hilton Harrisburg, the Whittaker Center, Kunkel Building, Shops on Third, and the International House Harrisburg. And whereas Harris Town Development Corporation has remained relevant over the past 50 years and continues to thrive while achieving their mission to increase social, cultural, and economic activity by excelling in urban planning and development to better link the downtown to Harrisburg's regional community. And now, therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that Harrisburg City Council commends Harris Town Development Corporation for their dedication to revitalizing downtown Harrisburg. And be it further proclaimed that Harrisburg City Council wishes to extend best wishes for a successful 50th year celebration. Signed and attested in the City of Harrisburg, Danielle L. Bowers, Harrisburg City Council, Michael J. Parker, City Clerk. If you wouldn't mind joining us, we'd love to take a photo and celebration. Thank you, everyone. Our second order of communications. This evening, we are joined by Ms. Gloria Martin Roberts, Director of Building and Housing, and Mr. Jason Graves, Director of Business Development. They will share a presentation on the 2024 Annual Action Plan.
Good evening, Honorable Councilmembers. As you can see, I brought some of my staff, and I wanted to introduce you to Tamika Moore, who's to my right. Tamika is actually the wind underneath the sail of this program. All too often, those of us in senior management positions come and talk with you, and you never have the opportunity to really know who the worker bees are in our departments. And you all know Jason. Jason is our business guy, but he is also a very strong team player and is involved in helping us with our community development block grant processes. We keep the team very involved in knowing what each other are doing in the various federal grant processes. So I am going to ask my staff to proceed with, I call it our dog and pony show. You have a copy in your packets. I have also provided in your packets other detailed information that will update you on the, what's happening with the 2022 block grant funds, in addition to timelines associated with the new grant process. And these are things you can take home, and a copy of the Sliso. So you can take these home and digest all that information. A copy of the plan is also in your packet. Jason.
All right, it's on me. How's everybody doing this evening? All right, that's good to hear. So what we are going over today is going to be the PowerPoint for the City of Harrisburg 2024 Annual Action Plan for the CDPG and ESG funds. If you have your PowerPoint package, you can, oh, so you scroll along. I have an actual brief summary as far as like summarized versions of each page, so I don't have to be very long-winded. So we will try to make the PowerPoint available pretty soon, so for the public to actually view themselves. Okay, so the consolidated plan and the annual action plan itself. This is going to go with the consolidated plan as far as administering for the CDPG, Home, and ESG through HUD's ADIS online forms. It will also determine the activities and funds for a five-year period. The annual action plan submitted annually within the comp, I'm sorry, the consolidation plan cycle specifies plan used for HUD programs and other requirements that we may need going forward as far as like administering funds or applications. The 2024 Action Plan Funds. So that would include funding for CDPG, Home, and ESG. So for the HUD 2024 fund allocations for CDPG, we're looking at $1,864,000, I'm sorry, $64,530,000 program income, around $15,000, totaling to $1,879.53, sorry, $53. Home was a total of $465,934.94. Program income would be around $10,000, totaling $4,790, sorry, $930.94. ESG also would be $165,432.0 for that program income. Tolling amount for the same, as far as the total allocation amount would be 1,000, I'm sorry, $165,432. All right, strategic plan and priority needs. So this will go down the line as priorities and goals. Public facilities and infrastructure, improving and expanding access. Public service and general public services, blight and demolishing of properties, removal of blight. Affordable housing and development, rental and homeownership housing development rehab programs. Homelessness and housing services, reduce homelessness throughout the area. And Section 108 loan repayment, which is not applicable for this. So Slide 5, the Annual Action Plan Goals. This is again, will go with public infrastructure, public service, blight and demolition, housing and development, homelessness and reduction. And Section 108 loan repayment, again, which is not applicable. So for the goal outcome indicators, we're looking at around 5,000, 5,000 for low to moderate income persons assisted, 20,000 to low to moderate income assistance, and that will be for A. One A for improving and expanding infrastructure, which would be the 5,000 for low to moderate income. One B, infrastructures, improvements of access to public facilities, around 20,000. Public services, 2,000 for low to moderate income persons assisted. Blight and demolition, again, buildings that need to be demolished throughout the area. Rental and housing development, that'll be rental units constructed, homeownership and housing development, homeowner, homeowner housing and units constructed. Owners and occupied housing rehab, homeownership and units rehabilitations. And reduce homelessness, and again, 500 persons experience homelessness, providing a shelter for 15 persons at-risk homelessness, provided prevention services. So 2024 Action Plan Projects and Funding. The amounts would be CDPG administration for $372,906. CDPG public services for $279,679. CDB public facilities and infrastructure, that would be $387,945. CDPG housing programs, $390,000. CDPG emergency demolition will be $224,000. CDPG Section 8, 108 loans permitted for payments would be $225,000. Home administration, $46,593. Home chotal, set aside 15% at $69,890. Home non-chotal housing development at $359,447.94. And the ESG 2024 would be at $165,432. Citizenship participation, again, public comment period will be reviewed between June 26 of 2024 and July 25 of 2024. Public hearing is actually what's going on right now for the current time for our city council for the meeting, for tonight's meeting. The next steps. So the Action Plan availability, downloadable to, again, like I said earlier, this will be an actual downloadable form for people to review later on for the city website. Any comments or submission can be written to DBHD Office or email dbhdpubliccomment@harrisburgpa.gov. HUD submissions deadlines will be August 16 of 2024. And contact information is here as always. Downtown Harrisburg, 10 North Second Street, Suite 206, Harrisburg, PA 17101. Or you can reach us by telephone, which would be either 311, you can connect us to a facilitator up in our office, or contact us directly outside at 717-255-3040. And again, you can email us at dbhdpubliccomment@harrisburgpa.gov.
Thank you very much for your presentation this evening. Just wanted to highlight the public comment period again, since this evening is serving as the public hearing. The city will hold a public comment review, review period from June 26, 2024 to July 25 of 2024 to give the public an opportunity to review and make comments on the draft action plan. I also wanted to note that the presentation has already been uploaded. I also wanted to note that the presentation has already been uploaded to e-codes under two thousand and twenty-four meeting materials. Thank you, Mr. Truesdale.
Thank you very much, Mr. Truesdale.
Already accessible on the city's website. We will hold any questions to ensure that council members have ample time to review all of the documentation shared this evening. So we will hold our questions for next week's work session and then discuss the materials further.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Guys, have a good evening.
Madam President, as is a public hearing on it, the public comment on this should be now.
Okay, that's fine.
And Madam Chair, we will be either addressing any questions that the public has tonight or we'll get their contact information and get back with them. That's a HUD requirement.
Yes. But you also are accepting written comments as well?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Okay, at this time, we will open public comment related to the two thousand and twenty-four action, annual action plan, excuse me. So if there's anyone that would like to provide public comment related to the two thousand and twenty-four annual action plan, please come forward now. Excuse me, hold on one second. If you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone and stating your name and your address for the meeting record, if you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please state, hold on, please state the vicinity in which you live within the city. You'll have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. You may proceed. Thank you. Hold on, sorry. Well, we'd like for you to speak into a microphone because the meeting is recorded. That way, those viewing online are able to hear you. There we go.
My name is John Palmer. I live at five eighteen Radnor Street, Harrisburg, PA one seven one one zero. From the brief synopsis that you've just given us, you said it's five hundred homeless people in the city of Harrisburg. The mayor's office is only providing housing for twenty-five of the five hundred from from your slideshow that I just gathered. Is there any other programs that y'all have slated for this year for these homes, these five hundred homeless people that we have in the blight areas down in the downtown section and up under the bridge and everywhere else where they're being lived at at this present time? Because it's coming, it's becoming a real problem all over the city. And you only slotted for fifteen out of five hundred.
So that, your comment is duly noted. So this is for a particular program that's funded by HUD. This is not technically a city program. We are the administrators of this program. So any questions you have as far as like what we can do further on as far as dealing with the homelessness, that could probably be something we could probably talk about further on. I could probably get your information. We could probably talk about some more things on that.
Okay, thank you.
Also, we are the city. We're also involved in a partnership with the several organizations that are working with the homeless population. So we really rely on them when we're at the table to address with us the needs that they have in terms of funding needs and so forth to continue to help the homeless population.
Thank you. And as I mentioned, not sure if you're available next Tuesday, but our work session will begin at five thirty and there will be a fuller discussion during that time. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment related to the two thousand and twenty-four annual action plan? Anyone? Okay, seeing and hearing, no one. Thank you for your presentation. We will now move to courtesy of the floor. Again, the same housekeeping notes. If you would like to share public comment this evening, please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. Is there anyone to my right that would like to offer public comment? Excuse me, one second. Come closer to the microphone or I don't know if it, I think it's turned off. Just, there's a switch at the top. There we go. Yes, I think it's on now. No. Is the battery low? If not, we can use a different microphone. There we go.
Hello, Isha Mobley is my name. I live actually in Pembroke, but I am talking about a camp that is going to be offered to our youth in the city. So it's about the empower, evolve and empower summer camp. I provided you all the information. The ages are ten to eighteen. The camp will start July eighth through August sixteenth, eight thirty AM to four PM. And the reason I'm here is just to give you the update because initially the camp was offered at the bridge. Gary Gillum is still part of this and Pat Robinson, Penn State Health Extension, Milton Hershey. But we'll be housed now at Tim Rowbottom's building, three thirty-three South Eighteenth Street. The youth will be walking over to the farm that's about a city block. So we just wanted to bring attention to the fact we'll be there, we'll be in the community. The youth will be walking. So we invite CSAs and police to come and, you know, surveil our area where the youth will be. I'm representing because Bread Coin, you know, I work for Bread Coin. And so Bread Coin is sponsoring the youth, the family and community meal, which is on Thursdays during the camp in the evening. So that's when the campers get to bring their entire family and their siblings and have a free meal. And so we're going to cycle through all of our different.
I think the battery is dying. If you wouldn't mind coming to a different microphone and just speak closely into that one. I apologize for the inconvenience. Thank you.
So that's when the campers get to bring their entire family is the Thursday meal. And so Bread Coin's board has put five thousand dollars towards that so we can provide it. And then all of our, they get to experience all of our variety of vendors. Word of Health, Isabel's Cuisine, Palumbo's, to name a few. So yes, we'll be doing that. I just wanted to bring your attention and we invite you all to participate with us. You can volunteer with us and serve the meal from four to six thirty if you like with Bread Coin or volunteer in any way at the camp. And so I'm excited that our youth will be able to get this experience.
And how can families register?
The registration actually has closed. We have filled to capacity the forty participant slots that were offered.
Okay, all right.
So is there any contact person that they can reach out to for any future things, website?
It's still, Gary, I can provide it to you. It's probably still the, you can go right to the site, evolve and empower. If you put that in your Google, there's a whole site for that as well. That's what I have for right now. The camp leader, Brian Hurd, is the camp manager. And he was going to come with me tonight, but he's not here, so I don't have that specific information. But I can give it to you, to your, to make sure that you receive it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, this is my first time here. I am Angela Bates and I live on, in Allison Hill. Today, I'm bringing, I'm coming to you because I work for Dolphin County Drug and Alcohol Services in a prevention unit. And we are doing a youth summer sports fest. And that will be scheduled every Wednesday for six weeks. And we're going to be starting at the Radnor Street Ballpark tomorrow from twelve to two. So it's free, free, free admissions for the children. We'll have snacks and water there. We'll have, people will be playing soccer. We have different events, information for the families to come out and it's open to the public. So anyone can.
Councilman Jones, do you have a question?
Same question. How can people get, reach out to anyone to contact them?
It is on our Dolphin County website. I emailed it to you. However, you can put it on channel twenty or whatever. That would be helpful too, but we're just getting it out, putting it out on emails. We're sending out, we go out to events, we tell everybody. So we're just word of mouth.
Okay.
And it's on our Dolphin County website.
Okay, you didn't have to call me out, but okay. No, I'm messing with you. No, but I will, I will, I will. Is there, but this is the same flyer, still isn't really, I mean, do I give your phone number? Or who, who would be the point of contact?
That would be Dolphin County Drug and Alcohol Service, that'd be seven one seven six three five two two five four. And Mr. Christian is in charge.
Okay.
Not Kristen, Christian.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Davis, do you have a question?
Thank you, President Bowers. Yes, one question. What is the age range for the children?
They can come, but if they're small, their parents should be there too.
Okay, so you don't have a limit or, okay.
Nope. We have different variations of games for everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening. My name is Bayard Thomas.
John Palmer here.
And we're here representing the men of seven one seven. A group of individuals, pastor leaders, community leaders and just, you know, men of concern in regards to what's going on in our community. So we have an event that we're hosting on July seventeenth. We're going to hold it on Reservoir Park. We're going to have different events up there, activities for the kids, for the community. We're going to have a basketball tournament. And we just using this as means to bring about a truce in our community, to bring into this gun violence the best way we can. So we're asking everybody to have any interest in forwarding our community and our children's lives in a better way to support us. Because it's not about us, it's about our children. And we just want anybody in this community to come join in with us. And we are employing people that have vendors, that are vendors, I should say, that have businesses and journeymen's, you know, businesses that have electricians, that are electricians, builders, carpentry, to come and join in and teach these kids how to live other than these criminal ways of thinking and activities. So we're going to do this, this is going to be the spearhead of something in regards to the men of seven one seven producing positive things in our community. So we just employing any and everybody in this community and the seven one seven area code because we're starting this here in Harrisburg, but we're extending it in other areas that encompass seven one seven.
What time is the event on July seventeenth?
It's going to start at eleven and it's going to go until eleven.
Eleven AM to eleven PM?
Yes.
Okay.
So is this also some other details? This is a day of peace. Okay, I just want to lead you on. Go ahead.
My apologies, my apologies. You want to go?
Yeah, we also have, we're also vending with a lot of brothers and sisters that are, have the trades. We're trying to set up things where our youth can go and learn trades instead of learning how to sell drugs on the corner. We want to learn how to, how to get some building trades, carpentry, educational. We're doing entrepreneurship. We have people that's coming in, teaching how to be entrepreneurs. We started to have it in four sections of Harrisburg at the same time, Uptown Hill, South Side and the projects. But it came too fast. We want to have it on seven one seven, which is July seventeen, because that's our area code, seven one seven. So it's going to be on July seventeenth every year. And like I said, we're spearheading this right now to try to put a stop to some of this gun violence. If we give these children something to do in the city and everybody with something to do that deters them from picking up guns and doing violence and hurting each other. You know what I mean? It's getting hot and these children don't have nothing to do. We don't, we don't offer them any resources as far as training so they can do something else. You know, in our community, we need to offer more training, more education. We're supposed to be at the school district meeting today, but they, they canceled it Thursday, so we'll be there too. And we want to give them something else to do. We want to, we all came from this environment. We all grew up here. We all know what it takes to try to save our community again. Because we were involved in all this at one time in our, in our lives. And now we have lots of us ministers, like we said, public leaders, people that used to be in the little gangs that changed their lives around and stopped. So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get back to our community.
This a day of peace?
Day of peace.
No gunshots?
No gunshots.
No fights?
No, no stealing, no robbing, no knocking old ladies down, no nothing.
All right.
Day of peace.
All right. Make sure we promote that.
Yes, we want, we want a day of peace totally in the whole city.
Thank you, thank you both. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Seeing, hearing, no one. Anyone in the middle section? Okay.
I have some handouts that include pictures. So if I can hand those out.
You can share them with Mr. Truesdale and you can begin your remarks. Thank you. Excuse me.
Sorry. Thank you. My name is Jeff Glad. I live at Townhouse Apartments. It's three hundred and sixty apartments and it's twenty floors. It's at six six zero Boas Street, Harrisburg, one seven one oh two. I have lived in the same eleventh floor apartment for twenty-three years. Over the past few years, I have wondered about my safety living at this location. The out-of-state New York landlord appears to be extremely cost-conscious. Does he have the staff and equipment to keep the building in good repair? I have filed four different complaints with the Pennsylvania Attorney General Bureau of Consumer Protection in the last year. The bureau advised me at one point to contact my local police department if I felt unsafe. There's a picture of the building in the, this is six sixty Boas Street. And as you can see, it's a tall building. To my mind, the landlord's stewardship of the four building elevators is symbolic of his stewardship of the building. Probably several thousand passengers are transported daily up and down the twenty floors. However, from March one, two thousand and twenty-three until August twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-three, a six-month period, each of the four elevators operated with expired operating certificates. And there's a picture of the operating certificates. And I've taken a newspaper with the date that I took the photograph and that appears in the picture. So you can see the, the, the date of these pictures was August twenty-first and the four certificates expired at the end of February. From the time I've, I filed my BCP complaint. From the time I filed my BCP complaint on August eighth, twenty twenty-three, until February twenty twenty-four, the landlord did not bother to respond to the complaint. In my mind, operating elevators without proper certificates not only flaunts Pennsylvania laws, but shows utter disrespect for tenants and their guests to the property. While I never contacted city police, I did find the complaint process for tenant landlord with Harrisburg City Code Enforcement. In November twenty twenty-three, an inspector visited my apartment and found some things not up to code with my apartment number one 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 nine. Because of my activism, the New York landlord has threatened to terminate the lease on one 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 nine, where I have lived for twenty-three years. I will move, but it is a difficult mental and physical process. I suggest the following. One, the city of Harrisburg, do a deep dive into any relationship that it may have with this landlord property owner. If the property owner has any obligations to the city, I suggest the city be scrupulous in reading the fine print to ascertain if the owner is abiding by his obligations to Harrisburg. And two, finally, I suggest that my apartment number one 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 nine be labeled unfit for human habitation. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. If you wouldn't mind staying after the meeting, I believe Councilman Jones may have some information that could be helpful for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment? I didn't know if you wanted to say something.
How you doing? My name is Anthony Pierce Rodriguez. I'm a founder and owner of Actions to Change Foundation. I got a lot to say, but I'm not going to do it. But I can go left real quick. About the violence that's been going on these last couple of days. I want to speak on that. Y'all sitting at that chair, so y'all know about the violence. Y'all feel probably the same way that everybody else out here in the city and community feels. If we're all not going to stick together or even bring it up to anybody else or take the precautions where the community or group leaders go beyond and outside their boxes, because y'all feel safe in that boxes, right? Or in the power that y'all feel in. But when you all go outside your boxes, it's like, I want to do something for my city instead of collecting that check and actually make something different. I think the community will follow you and give you more support if you bring it to the table instead of behind that closed door. And for a couple of them that's doing this fraudery stuff and this fake stuff, and be honest with you, they put a name out there in the beginning through people's help that looked out for them. But they want to go back to their old slimy self and they pass and turn your back on the help that when they need it, because they in that position to do it. That person, who the fuck I'm talking about? Excuse my language. Huh? Oh, Mr. Rodriguez, the full shit person. Always want the ability for people to help you, but then you don't give it back for your selfish needs. I heard you in charge of class cleanup. I haven't seen you nowhere, when I know me and Mr., another councilman been out there on a weekly basis doing our job with the community. At the end of the day, my grandparents always told me, even though that you got the same last name as I do, which you disrespect, what stays in the dark, what come the light? And Colin's a bitch. I heard you was trying to run for mayor. You already know that ain't going to happen. I wanted to get this off my chest and I ain't want to do it here. I want to do it to you like a man, face to face, but you so much of a coward to even reach out to me and talk about it. I had to see if Commissioner Carter was here. More of the city councilmen need to follow outside the box, go outside the box. You need help, even if you need help, you know what I mean? Reach out. Y'all got websites, y'all got contact numbers, you know what I mean? With people out here like me that's in the mud daily, trying to keep, trying to keep my city safe. I do this on my own. Y'all ain't giving me no funding. A lot of people know who I am. I'm out here cutting the homeless's hair, doing the kids, lower incomes and senior citizens that can't get around. I don't see nothing. Oh, my time's up.
Yep, thank you for your comment.
Ah, thank you, welcome.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Rodriguez.
I know usually I don't, but I would have to make a statement because if you allow a lie to proceed, it can eventually turn into the truth. So to Mr. Rodriguez's comments, I appreciate him coming in and being a part of the community. But we did support his nonprofit to the total. We paid him for every event. He came out, we wanted to give him a platform. And also, we've attended a few of his events where I took my kids to his event to go fishing and the fishing never took place. So, you know, I'm here to still support Mr. Rodriguez. But sometimes you have to check a lie before, you know, it gets out there. And anyone that knows me really knows what my heart is and I'm still here to support him in any way. I'm sorry he feels that way and I appreciate what he does with the mobile barber shop and he does a great job. So I have nothing negative to say. I just have to definitely check a lie. And to the members on council that encourage, you know, negativity, you know, I definitely appreciate it because I get how politicians can be. But my heart is pure and we always have great intentions. So I just needed that to be on the record. Thank you.
And if you, and if you talking about me, Mr. Rodriguez, I'm asking him to speak. I don't encourage negativity, not being a public safety chair. I didn't encourage negativity, but I don't like when people come to the podium and they say things and we are a body. And if they have specific issues, he has a right as a taxpayer to address you. That's it.
Absolutely. I appreciated that. I never said a specific council member. I just said I understand how politics work. I'm sorry you were offended by that.
Yeah, because you said, well, I told him to say it. I said, speak. That's what I told him. So no one else said anything.
There's no way I would know that, sir. I'm not there. There's no way I would know that.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my left that would like to offer?
Actually, I'm at camp, sir, taking care of our youth, but you have my number. Feel free to call me.
Excuse me, Councilman Rodriguez.
You can come talk to me right now, sir. Thank you.
We're moving forward with our meeting agenda. Thank you. Seeing and hearing no one to my left, as I mentioned, we're going to move forward with the meeting agenda as printed. Next, we have the approval of minutes. As I mentioned, during our legislative caucus, there are two sets of minutes for approval. The first are the minutes for the legislative session that occurred on June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Council members, are there any revisions to those meeting minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes for the legislative session of June eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four stand approved. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the special legislative session that occurred on June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Council members, are there any revisions to those minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes for the special legislative session that occurred on June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four stand approved. We have one committee report this evening, which I will deliver on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session that occurred on June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. On Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Administration Committee met to discuss one bill, Bill Three of two thousand and twenty-four, in ordinance amending Title Two of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, known as the Administrative Code at Chapter two dash seven zero seven, Police Retirement System by deleting portions thereof in order to satisfy a legal resolution reached between the Capitol City Lodge Number Twelve, the Fraternal Order of Police and the City of Harrisburg. Mr. Neil Grover, City Solicitor, was present on behalf of the Administration. Solicitor Grover shared background information related to modifications that were made to the police pension in December of two thousand and twenty-one. Just a few more details. On December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Harrisburg City Council passed Bill Fifteen of two thousand and twenty-one. Bill Fifteen of two thousand and twenty-one updated the same chapter, Chapter two dash seven zero seven of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, governing the police retirement system to provide technical amendments and incorporate the methodology for calculating final salary to assure compliance with certain internal revenue service requirements for governmental pension plans. On or about January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, this Capitol City Lodge Number Twelve Fraternal Order of Police filed an action in the Dolphin County Court of Common Police, Civil Action Number two thousand and twenty-two dash C V dash zero zero six four nine, which challenged certain modifications to the police retirement system. Then, on June fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, in order to resolve the issue, the party stipulated to the repeal and deletion of two subsections of Chapter two dash seven zero seven of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg. Those were subsections C and D. There were three officers that were impacted and negotiated three different agreements. City council members asked the following questions, clarifying the subsections that were deleted. So that was subsection C and D. Questions around similar contracts and retirement payouts. I recommend that my colleagues support Bill Three of two thousand and twenty-four as it will maintain compliance with the modifications that have been made to the police retirement system. This concludes the report of the Administration Committee. We do not have any ordinances for first reading. We have one ordinance for amendment. That's Bill Three of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill Three, two thousand and twenty-four, in ordinance amending Title Two of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, known as the Administrative Code at Chapter two, seven oh seven, Police Retirement System by deleting portions thereof in order to satisfy a legal resolution reached between the Capitol City Lodge Number Twelve, the Fraternal Order of Police and the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. We will now move to ordinances for final passage. Again, we have Bill Three of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it one more time?
Bill Three, two thousand and twenty-four, in ordinance amending Title Two of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, known as the Administrative Code at Chapter two, seven oh seven, Police Retirement System by deleting portions thereof in order to satisfy a legal resolution reached between the Capitol City Lodge Number Twelve, the Fraternal Order of Police and the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Bill Three of two thousand and twenty-four? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Bill Three, two thousand and twenty-four passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have resolutions. The first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution Forty-One of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Forty-One, two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution approving the two thousand and twenty-four Annual Action Plan for the City of Harrisburg for the Community Development Block Grant, CBDG Home Investment Partnerships, H O M E, and Emergency Solutions Grant, E S G Programs.
Thank you. Resolution Forty-One of two thousand and twenty-four will move to the Building and Housing Committee. Next, we have Resolution Forty-Two of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Forty-Two, two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution appointing Mr. Joel Siders to serve on the coordinating committee and the technical committee of the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study.
Thank you. Resolution Forty-Two of two thousand and twenty-four will move to the Administration Committee. Our final resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution Forty-Three of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Forty-Three, two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution appointing Mr. Todd Webb to serve on the coordinating committee and as an alternate member to the technical committee of the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study.
Thank you. Resolution Forty-Three of two thousand and twenty-four will also move to the Administration Committee. Is there any old business council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the time is seven oh one PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Okay, thank you. We stand adjourned.